Evening, everybody. Welcome to the office meeting in San Diego. We're here in San Diego, and I'm welcoming you to the school here. This is where we have the meeting with the school and our administration. And we can start out with my ladies. They're sitting next to me.
(laughter) (inaudible) 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 (laughter) Alright, so, I'm gonna start with the board. Uh, I got a motion on the need. So, what do you think about this? Second by all this, side of the board. Steve, bye.
Bye, yeah.
This is I.
Total, total line I. So, we're all here, and we can now go ahead. So, the first item here, uh, it's going to be continued public hearing for 188th Street. And I believe we've been working on traffic. (inaudible) (laughter)
I am, uh, I'm gonna try to not use the mic. I think everybody can hear, if you okay. Small. I love the thumbs up. Thank you very much. So, good evening, everybody. Um, yes, so continued public hearing for 188th Street. The intent for tonight's meeting is to be discussing specifically traffic. So, we have, on the applicant side, Bobby Show from MDM. That is the applicant's traffic engineer, who I believe has a little presentation on his design that he has. We also have, on the town's peer review side, the third-party peer reviewer, Kevin Dandry and John Dixon from TEC, who will also give their findings on their review of Bobby Show's design and report. Once that's done, um, you know, it's your chair, it's up to you, but I envision the board will probably have some, some questions or comments, concerns, and then we're gonna open it up to the public. And as I mentioned, we really wanna specifically stick with traffic tonight. We're gonna have plenty of other meetings, we're gonna go through the topics as we go. Um, so, traffic, I know, is a big concern, it's been mentioned at the three previous, uh, public hearings. So, now, um, we're gonna specifically focus in on traffic tonight. And the other thing to note is, you know, with the designs, they're ever-evolving. I don't envision, this is the last time we're going to be talking about traffic. But this is the first time that the applicant will actually have their opportunity to present their materials, and that's why we're just gonna discuss that tonight.
Was that, or were you?
How, yes, I, I, I don't think I need a microphone, but if anyone can hear me, okay? Good, thank you. Uh, so, for the record, I'm Bobby Show, and I'm the management principal of MDM Transportation Consultant, based in Marlboro. We've worked, been around the Bellingham community for 22 years now, plus. Uh, we're glad to be here today to talk about this project. Last, that was before the college, uh, with the team, uh, the project was a different entity at that time. It's been substantially changed. You know, I wanna really recap some of the highlights of what's been updated and what the impacts associated with that change means. Um, in fact, I'll, uh, get a small outline here. Uh, summary, high-level summary is that the project, which was last presented in winter this year, uh, was a much larger project at the time. Since, it's been substantially reduced from 1,600 units down to 800. Uh, we'll talk about what that means in terms of impact. Uh, what I'd also like to do is review some of the improvements and plans that we anticipate would be needed to offset the impact of the project, to enhance safety among 8th Street in particular, all of which is subject to peer review. And then, uh, third, uh, at least, is, uh, our coordination, which is ongoing with the peer reviewer, uh, on some of the commentary that they've had of the program, the plans that are anticipated. Uh, the site is, uh, a very large site, as the community knows. It comprises, uh, many acres, including the New England Country Club. Uh, last, this was before you, there were actually two components of this larger parcel that were planned for development, uh, what we call the western parcel and an eastern parcel. Uh, since that time, the development has been downsized in this application to comprise what we call the western parcel, uh, which is shown in that outlined diagram here. That parcel happens to have frontage directly onto 8th Street, which affords an opportunity for some access improvements, which I'll speak to in a moment. Uh, and we took the time, as we did with the larger project, to understand the impact of developing that western parcel at very specific locations and gateways in the area. They're shown as red dots. So, of course, the very front door, uh, the existing, um, access to New England Country Club, uh, the planned access, uh, which I'll speak to in a moment, the Pulaski Boulevard, 8th Street intersection, as well as Kane and Rent the Road intersection, CBS signal, which is tied into Pulaski. Uh, and to the east, Rent the Road at Main Street, and toward the north, Main Street as well. So, we take it a comprehensive view of what the impact of this would be from the standpoint of where you would likely be going to or from if you were living at this particular site. Uh, also, subject to peer review. Um, this, the rendering of the west parcel. This is the 800 units that are currently envisioned and proposed. Uh, this is 8th Street on the left side of the page. Uh, Rent the Road is on the top of the page. Uh, this is the existing New England Country Club driveway. Uh, what's shown here is what looks to be a horseshoe of sorts, uh, but that represents a new access point at the bottom of the hill on 8th Street that, uh, will eventually be signalized to support not only the 800 units, but the continued operation of the Country Club, New England Country Club. Uh, with the retention from the existing driveway to top of the hill, it's really intended to serve as an emergency access point, so that you have the ability, uh, for emergency response, either using the signalized access or, uh, continued use of that driveway to help develop. Uh, from an impact perspective, uh, we need to put some context on what 800 units of 5500 development are generating. Uh, this is again, subject to peer review, to make sure that what we're representing is reasonable and consistent with, um, industry practices. Uh, we know that for every 800 units built, that a site like this can generate between 20 and 25 vehicles total coming in, into and out of development. So that over time, as we get to the 800-unit scenario, full build out of that parcel, um, those trips in their entirety, uh, can be accommodated in each one of those red dot locations that I mentioned earlier. Uh, we expect, and I'll show you in a moment, I'll just announce for us, but that there will be about a 5% change or impact in the volumes that currently exist at the signalized location of Pulaski, people on 8th Street. Right, so, so that's the kind of impact we're talking about. Um, I mentioned that these parcels eliminated, and as a result, and again, this is subject to peer review commentary, the impacts that otherwise would have occurred to Rent the Road in particular have been really substantially reduced, uh, to the point that, uh, we're talking about between maybe 5, 10, or 20 vehicles an hour, uh, using that particular road. So, the impact of this project really is focused more on 126, uh, you know, Route 140, 495, 95 via Bruce Callahan and Rent the Road. Um, and what our analysis shows is that for the most impacted location, the single at Pulaski Boulevard, uh, that, that location currently works at an acceptable level of service. Now, by that, (inaudible).
(inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible).
Alright, let's, let's continue, okay? Let's sort of continue.
I wanna qualify that in the engineering world that this project lives in, is subject to peer review for, there are very specific criteria that relate to how an intersection functions. Levels of service don't necessarily correlate directly to vehicle queues or what folks might experience on a day-to-day basis. It's a lettering rating that allows the traffic engineer, consulting firm, and designer to understand where, in relation to what the state would identify as an acceptable operating standard in intersectional areas. Uh, and in the context of a location like this, a level of service D is, by definition, as Master T would define it, and as the Commonwealth understands, an acceptable level of service. It doesn't mean that there aren't delays, it doesn't mean that there aren't queues, and it doesn't mean that there aren't ways to improve how a location functions, but it's simply an objective criteria that is used to put a, a lettering rating on an intersection for comparison to state level standards. Uh, we know that that currently meets that standard, and it will continue to meet that standard at 800 units of additional development, 5500 development. Uh, that same level of service rating, or better, will exist at the proposed driveway on 8th Street, as well as other area intersections. Uh, that said, uh, intersections are not even permanently triggered or needed as a function of this project. Doesn't mean that we're not considering ways to make things work better. It means that there is not an objective, independent trigger that would indicate at 800 units, you have to build a new intersection, and you have to add lanes, or things like that. Those conditions do not exist with this project. Doesn't mean we're not gonna take a look at improving things. Certainly not something that's triggered by the project. Uh, that could mean things like single optimization at Pulaski Boulevard. And I understand folks who use that intersection on a day-to-day basis experience viewing, particularly in the northbound approach. We've seen it, we've documented it, it's been subject to peer review. Uh, we understand that. Uh, the project will, uh, impact that to a small degree, but it can be more than offset by improvements that we're now evaluating in coordination with peer reviewing, uh, particularly for, for single use. Uh, here's a table that indicates, in a snapshot of time, how much traffic that 800 unit, 5500 development generate. These are based on industry standards, it was subject to peer review. Uh, it indicates, and this is not all of the traffic it's generating. Uh, this is a snapshot of one-hour period, at the highest activity period in the morning, somewhere from between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning. That's these numbers. And somewhere from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, uh, that's these numbers. And what it shows is that in the entirety, the number of folks leaving this development during that time period in the morning, with just over 100 total vehicles, and coming back in the evening, about 112. Yet, that's not all of the traffic. It means that at 7:00 to 8:00, that might happen, and again, maybe 9:00, essentially, a dimension over time. So, those are the numbers that we base our analysis on, and it's subject to peer review. Uh, if we look at schematic of what that means, and where those trips might go, um, this is a high-level schematic, right? This is 8th Street, right here. Uh, South Main, Pulaski Boulevard, Main Street, Rent the Road, CBS signal, Pulaski Civil Signal. This is the proposed signal at the driveway. Uh, if you were at the Pulaski intersection, over the course of an hour, we expect that of that 100 vehicles that would be leaving, three out of four of those, those vehicles would be inclined to make a right turn to go on northbound to Employment Centers. Metro West Employment Centers, Worcester Employment Centers, Pulaski Employment Centers. Uh, and that's borne out by, um, research that has been subject to peer review and corroborated by peer review. So, we have a comfort level that, on a regional basis, the trips would be more oriented to go north than they will in Rhode Island. Right, Employment Centers are principally located in the Massachusetts. Uh, so, if you track that, of that 100 vehicles, 70 or so of those are gonna be making a right turn, going to the Pulaski signal, mostly, and splitting either as a right turn or a through, depending on your destination. So, what we're showing is an increase of about 30 to 35 vehicles, vehicle every two minutes, that would be added to the through lane or the right turn at that intersection. That's the kind of volume that we're analyzing as part of this project. Uh, if you look at other locations, if you, uh, if you go further along Pulaski Boulevard and Main Street, you'll see that those 30 then split a little bit more. Uh, this is a regional, um, snapshot of what those trips would look like over a one-hour period in the morning. Uh, so, this is a more graphical representation of how many of those vehicles would be at certain areas of town. So, this is the 30, so the 30 trips an hour, so we continue north on 126. Uh, there would be on Pulaski Boulevard, to the east, just under 30. Uh, as you can see, on the Rhode Island side, there were about 30 that are going to Rhode Island. And of course, at the inbound in the morning, there, there were less, right? People are, are not necessarily coming back from a location.
All people go to the left. Alright, now, we, let's let him do the presentation, and then we'll have the...
(inaudible).
We'll, we'll, we'll get to all of that as well. We're, the wedding's finished, and then we'll have the towns making the draft of the street. And this is a document that they've prepared for us, asking for courtesy to all petitions.
Thank you, sir. So, this is an evening equivalent. Uh, we see those same trends in reverse, essentially. So, the same, I don't need to go through the details of every vehicle, but, uh, that has all been built into the analysis for the project. Uh, and, um, that was subject to peer review, now speak to that moment. In terms of improvements, how do you offset the impact of those types of vehicle increases? We spent a lot of time thinking about how access at the front door would work. The applicant proposes to address some issues at the existing driveway at the top of the hill, which does not have a great sightlines, uh, is somewhat difficult to navigate, by converting it into an emergency use-only driveway. They propose that consultation with the town, uh, peer review, et cetera. And to replace that with a new driveway, which we signalized, uh, uh, and will include additional turn lanes to assist in how it functions. In addition, that driveway will implement additional sidewalk improvements along 8th Street, across 8th Street, and connect, uh, those 800 units for folks who want to walk to 8th Street and eventually walk to a location like CBS, for instance. Uh, those are all built in, those are proven, I'll share with you a little later, in a moment. Uh, we're also sensitive to, uh, comments that we receive, both from the town and through this type of forum, of the need for 8th Street safety-related improvements. And we've taken the time, uh, in a most recent document dated back to May this year, to, uh, obtain specific crash records from the police department that detail, uh, where these crashes are occurring, uh, under what circumstances they occur, and to identify potential countermeasures, ways to improve its safety and operation. Things that exist prior to and independent of this project. We've taken the time to look at that, and what we've discovered is that, um, and you know this already, that folks on 8th Street, they don't go 25 miles an hour, right? They, they go much faster than that, particularly in the downhill direction. We've measured that, that's subject to peer review as well. Uh, we know those speeds can be in excess of 40 miles an hour. Uh, and that speed is important because it is a design element that we need to take into account, to look at how we design and create interception, what the sightlines need to look like to be sure that we're properly accounting for those types of characteristics. Uh, but at the top of the hill, there are things that can be done. Uh, and I'll, I'll show you about it in a moment. They include things like driver feedback signs, radar-based signs, that indicate how fast they're actually going. Uh, those are not an absolute panacea, you know, if you're making people drive 25 miles an hour, but they are effective, and it's improved and effective to mitigate, to some degree, how fast people are actually traveling by making full care of it in real time. Uh, we also know that improving the visibility of markings and signs, particularly for nighttime operations, is important. Uh, the crash records that we did obtain from the police department, to put it in context, were for the three-year period from 2022, three out of four, uh, indicating that of the four crashes that are in the police department's database, they have individual records for, for, over that three-year period. Uh, all of them involve a single-vehicle crash happening after midnight and before 6:00 AM in the morning, under dark conditions. Single vehicles hitting fixed objects, uh, most likely because they didn't have the ability to see them clearly. Uh, and so, um, high-visibility markings is a feature that can improve that, as well as enhanced warning signs, all of them have been considered, considered consultation for town. And finally, the TDM, Transportation Demand Management and monitoring of the project, wants to still understand how it's actually functioning and being able to adjust, uh, and respond to the actual operations of the site. This is a diagram that shows what that proposed driveway at the bottom of the hill, 8th Street, looks like. Uh, what it includes is a widening of 8th Street to allow for an exclusive left-turn lane as you're coming southbound, be able to make a left turn into the property here. Uh, that widening will allow flare widening on the southern leg, uh, to, to gently transition vehicles through the intersection. Uh, you can see that there are separate turn lanes to the driveway itself, which is a proposed signal. And importantly, you can see that there's a sidewalk element that comes down to that intersection, crosses the intersection, then connects to enhance the sidewalks, reconstructing sidewalks along 8th Street. Uh, we know, uh, the town, through its commentary, peer review, is interested in understanding, uh, what additional enhancements to the sidewalk might be possible along 8th Street, perhaps even beyond what's shown here on the plan. We're in the process of evaluating that at this time. Uh, and, uh, we also know, and this has come up repeatedly in comments, that there is a crest on a small hill here, right, in this vicinity. For this stop, our show, that's about where the high point of that crest is. So, uh, if you're coming mark down, or if you're headed towards this location, what happens is you come down rather steep grade, but that grade flattens to essentially 0% grade in this area, and then climbs slightly to that high point, and then proceeds to redound again. Uh, so, uh, one of the design features that they're evaluating is how to improve, uh, the vertical alignment of the roads. In other words, make it flatten by elevating some portion of that crest. That's a design feature. It's a detail, it's really subject to detailed engineering design. It's not the subject of this hearing. Uh, it's not necessarily the peer review at this time. It's a future design exercise, but we're aware of it. Uh, that crest, uh, does not impair or impair the ability for this driveway as shown here to meet safety standards for sightlines. And that was an important, uh, consideration in peer review, uh, and will continue to be an important consideration because this intersection, as a new intersection, will absolutely have to meet those standards. And we know, based on the survey that we've conducted, uh, it's ongoing design and evaluation, that we have far more sightline than we actually need based on necessary criteria for those higher speeds that people are experiencing. Uh, we, we took a very careful look at those sightlines. Uh, this was presented in a prior testimony. Uh, the signal here, during the peak hour, uh, which resulted in some of our viewing, right? And that's shown here, is what it helps to show based on how many times that signal would have to cycle, most of the time would be passing green on 8th Street. But when a vehicle, or a series of vehicles comes down the driveway, would activate the signal that required the folks to get down the hill or head south down, would have to stop. And that analysis, which was also subject to peer review, indicate that on average, there were about four, four to five cars queued under those circumstances. There could be as many as eight, worst case. And as you're coming down the hill, there's ample sightline visibility from that car to the back end queue. One of the things that we were asked to look at very carefully, we did. Uh, you can say that the, uh, the sightline there exceeds the standard by at least a factor of two. So, there's absolutely the ability to see what we need to react to when you're coming down the hill from that corner. Uh, likewise, and this is a...
Can't look through a tree.
The peer review process is that we also looked at the sightlines from that northerly lake. Uh, and we made a few basic surveys. We've done a profile, there's a little bump in the road, that little crest right here, which is about that location, that the driveway in both directions exceeds the requirements of sightline. Not just in parts, uh, but we acknowledge that there is a crest there that's been subject to ongoing conversation, that will be addressed throughout the process. At the top of the hill, uh, you know, we took the time to look at sightlines, uh, and, and, uh, potential actions. This, uh, lower, uh, corner diagram right here shows the driver feedback sign that I mentioned earlier. That driver feedback sign, we place it somewhere at the top of the hill if we're approaching that curve in the corner, so that folks who are approaching that corner would have an understanding how fast they're actually going. Uh, those have been shown, uh, inclusively, to reduce travel speeds by an average of four miles an hour. Uh, so, they, they can be effective. They're not a solve-all solution, but part of the entire package is being considered. Uh, I mentioned as well that the pavement markings and the signs along that curve in particular would be enhanced, with highly reflective markings, both on the ground and sign format, so that if someone's driving at this, you know, early time in the morning when crashes occasionally occur, um, you have higher visibility. So, those types of features are all being considered as part of off-site. Um, peer review, uh, is an ongoing process. We are now in receipt, uh, of the initial peer review commentary. That commentary, as it's currently published, was based on the originally submitted practice study at 1,600 units. Since that time, in May of this year, we issued an addendum that looks at the reduced impact of 800 units. Uh, they're just presented to you. Uh, and, uh, I can say that based on the initial review, there are many areas of confirmation and agreement on how our study was conducted and the technical basis for how they've been done. So, for instance, uh, the traffic count, times, and periods were confirmed, schools were in session, and the counts were conducted during an above-average season that were done in May, uh, which is an above-average traffic month. And that's important to understand because in traffic engineering world, um, we're obligated to look at an average or typical condition. That is the standard. So, in the normal course, if we would do counts in, say, May, realize it's 5% or more higher than average, and actually reduce those volumes to be more representative of an average or typical condition. We didn't do that. We took a high road, we didn't reduce the volumes. We wanna start at a higher bar. And peer review has, has acknowledged that it's being appropriate and conservative. Um, trip generation. Trip generation, uh, which I just described to you, is based on national standards, which were corroborated, uh, by peer review as being appropriate. For this project, trip distribution, regional trip distribution patterns were reviewed in peer review with concurrence. That approach and methodology was appropriate. Future year traffic projections, taking today's condition and look seven years from now, to understand how traffic might grow over time, so that we can account for that. That was confirmed and corroborated in the peer review. And finally, the capacity analysis, the level of service D that I mentioned, and all of those technical aspects of how we quantify the impact of the project were confirmed and corroborated under the peer review. So, there's many areas in which the peer review is acknowledged, confirmed, and agreed with what has been presented. Um, there are absolutely certain areas of clarification and additional data that are being requested, and that's typical in a peer review process. My firm does these peer reviews on a regular basis throughout the Commonwealth, uh, and it's, uh, very common to ask for additional backup material to support some of the underlying assumptions we're finding. Uh, in this case, Elbow Street, uh, was identified as a street that should be quantified and included in the analysis, and it is being included. Uh, we are updating counts at 8th Street and Rent the Road to include those interceptions at Elbow Street, so that we understand how many people actually use it, what those patterns look like. Uh, we also are looking at the actual traffic activity for what's there today at NCC Golf Course. Uh, when we did the counts in May, uh, the commentary from peer review was, gee, you know, we think the lines to the golf course were quite a little on the low side, and you confirm that those were accurate. I can say that, uh, if you look at industry standards and you apply those trip rates, we're within 15 vehicle trips of what a typical golf course would generate, so we don't believe that we're that far off. But we are in the process of looking at actual T-sheet counts, uh, for the summer, and understanding what the ebb and flow of traffic activity is for the... and understanding what the ebb and flow of traffic activity is for the existing golf course. I cannot anticipate that that's going to be much different than what we already included in the study, but we'll, if it is, well, we'll evaluate it, uh, in the coming days. Sightlines of the driveway, there were some clarifying points that I've already covered about the crest and how it affects sightlines of the driveway. Those will be identified and reviewed more details in coming days. And, uh, a recommendation, well, for signal improvements, the offset project in particularly Polack Boulevard, which we are in the process of looking at and evaluating. Recommendations in that peer review, uh, include, uh, looking at, taking a deeper dive at the safety characteristics of the Polack Signal in particular. I will note that that is not a high crash location, as it's defined by NASTIOT in its database, but it has an above-average crash rate. And as a result, uh, the request is to take a deeper dive and understand why that is and what potential measures might be implemented to enhance the safety of that location. So that's a recommendation that we're taking into consideration. Uh, signal improvements, offset impact, I mentioned. For context, um, that thirty vehicles per lane, sixty vehicles, uh, an hour or so, they're going to be going out in the morning through the Polack Signal. Based on our analysis, uh, it's going to add, uh, a queue length of about two, maybe three cars. We don't believe that that's going to be much different than what people experience today. But it doesn't mean it can't be improved, so we're going to take a look at how to work with the signal equipment, which is fairly modern equipment, to see if we can reduce that enough. Not only offset the impact of the project, but we may need to go stepping on that and see if we can make it work even better than it does currently. Uh, sidewalk improvements, I mentioned on Payne Street, there are aspects of the sidewalk that, um, you know, there's this curve and cracked sections that could stand some maintenance, so we're taking a closer look at that to understand what those needs actually are. We'll continue that conversation with the town. Uh, driveway designs, some modifications I mentioned are still in the process, but, uh, at this point, we firmly believe that what's being proposed will more than adequately address the safety needs and the operation needs of the use, uh, subject to refined engineering design processes. Finally, uh, there is a notion, uh, that came up when we initially presented the project at sixteen hundred units. The commentary was, would it make sense to have an additional driveway directly on Rentham Road because of the distance between the east and west parcels, the number of units, to better distribute trips associated with that, particularly as it related to the east of the parcel? And we actually did work at and evaluate at a high level what that would need. Since that time, we're dealing with a much different project at this point, eight hundred units, that has provided directly on Payne Street. Uh, the need and the benefits associated with the Rentham Road driveway are greatly diminished, quite frankly. Uh, I mentioned earlier in the presentation that Rentham Road, that doesn't mean we're not going to add traffic to it, but we're not relying on it substantially to get people what we need to get to, uh, for the project. As you expect, that Rentham Road will sustain an impact of, uh, maybe ten vehicles, fifteen vehicles an hour. Uh, and, and that, uh, the, the need for a third driveway, if you will, really does apply to the level of, uh, of need as what perhaps, uh, might be the issue in the project. That would be a continued part of the conversation. So that's what we have. I'm glad to hand it over to, uh, peer reviewer, recap their findings, and, uh, be there for answers.
Hello, uh, my name is John. I'm with the TDC, and we put together a report here, uh, based upon pretty public impact study. We won't go through everything word by word, but we have some of, uh, findings that we had. It's going to be found, uh, by the next additional, additional review. Uh, I know, yeah, quite a few of those are mentioned here. They are working on updating, uh, we created, uh, like, this particular, oh. Seems like it's kind of been handled this far. Uh, so first thing right off of that, um, we had a couple of items mentioned, three that we had there of the peak hour times that they selected, and we agree with that, and we, we don't need any response for that. Um, so, uh, and then also the growth rate that they're projecting over the seven-year period. Uh, they utilize a one percent growth rate, and we also agree with that. So those two right off of that, uh, and then working through the rest, um, our, our first note was on the study area. Um, and as I mentioned in that, uh, presentation, we stated that we should include Elbow Street, uh, we branded Elbow Street.
Excuse me. Can you just slow down a bit?
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
I don't know. Is it, are you ready? Yeah, let's try it out. So, uh, the study area that you looked at.
There are.
Yeah, so we, we stated there should be, uh, study done out here in Elbow Street as well. They agree with that, or, or, we get that from the presentation. And the reason for that is there is potential that come-through traffic on Elbow Street, which already occurs, as we understand it, could increase from this, uh, for, yeah, essentially individuals we made that are using Rentham, uh, Road, or Rentham Street, sorry, to, uh, to avoid the Polack intersection. The traffic counts, as, as they do it as well, we questioned the, the time that it was done. If they're really accurate, probably used for the Belt Course. I don't know, but I'm not sure that the first thing in May is equipment's up and running, so that's why we're looking at those. And, uh, we know that, you know, that I, you know, using the, uh, the T-shirts, right? Uh, you know, we think that's a great way to check it, and we're, you know, want to see how that pans back. And then also just to make sure that's part of our, the no builds as well, and I'm just, so, you know, that's where we're looking at that. Uh, we mentioned, so peak hour times, we're good with those. So our fourth point that we made, and we're going to keep trying to slow down. Uh, the crashes, uh, here in the driveway, we, we agree with the methodology they used of collecting the crash reports, looking through those, um, some of the mitigation items that they suggested in there, uh, having radar feedback signs. You know, I think that, we, we believe that it would be, you know, appropriate to include there as a mitigation strategy, the high visibility rating markings, um, street lighting as well is something considered. I believe that they've been referenced in the end of, uh, so we, we agree with our mitigations. And again, as was mentioned in there, the intersection of the signal for Polack, where the crash rate is higher than average, a bit higher than, so, um, we recommend a road safety audit be conducted for the municipal version of road safety audit, which is where you get traffic professional, but also your police, fire department, and, you know, people who are heavily involved in the town. You all go up together, look at the safety situation, look at how things are operating, what are those safety concerns are, why? And essentially try to determine why there are so many crashes occurring. Um, and then from that, like, this would be generated of potential improvements. And from that list, there may be some additional mitigation options that would be beneficial where the volume would be increasing at that intersection to prevent the crash rate from further building up with the increasing volume. Next thing we looked at was the sight distance for the driveway. Um, we do generally agree that at the, the crest of the little hill there, you can see a sufficient distance in either direction to be able to pull it up. Um, there's a little bit of trimming that we needed on them. Uh, we had an issue with the sight distance of, uh, and, and as was mentioned in the presentation as well, is for left turns into the driveway. Uh, the issue we saw there was the sight distance, the stopping sight distance, actually, you know, approaching southbound with that crest. There's a spot on the other side of that crest in a, a sag or where it dips down, where you temporarily lose visibility of the vehicles coming northbound. Our concern there is if someone is approaching to take a left, and their speed is high enough, as they start taking that left, they may not be able to stop quickly enough if another car appears coming out of that crest. Uh, so I know from mitigation strategy they mentioned was reducing height of that crest to improve the visibility there. Uh, that's something that, as the design progresses forward, is something, yeah, we'd want to have. Uh, then the trip generation, which is the, the numbers you saw earlier saying there are going to be monitoring for, or, there are about a hundred vehicles at the, at different times, uh, for, for peak hours, to understand when that was being assessed at that point. Uh, we do generally agree that those trips were generated correctly based on IT data, which is the standard data that we use. Uh, our note on here, though, is that, uh, just to the, to the board, to ensure that senior adult living is enforced in some way. If this development becomes, um, no longer specifically senior adults, that trip generation would be different. There would be more, uh, more trips integrated during the peak hours. So there would, if there's not sufficient control on that, it would be beneficial to look at other trip generators. So we pointed that out in our study, uh, what should I say? Uh, the trip distribution, uh, in, in the current, they've requested that it be updated based on not having the eastern parcel anymore. We do, we did look through the addendum of an issue and updated letter, so that has been addressed where they updated, you know, what went through the eastern parcel. And one of the things that we, we had, uh, mentioned to them was that it may be beneficial to look at GPS routes. This is just to look at where things are taking individuals. How much is, you know, someone who broke the contact rule, might want to take Rentham Road because people want to equally put the signal as intersection at Polack? And looking at a little bit further, but in general, we do agree with the distribution that they used. The way they did it was based on, um, census data, uh, sound shame, where, what percent of people in many one city or town where they're going to go to the, to the most part. Uh, and most of those locations are, you know, in the directions that they were showing. They, they distributed it out in a way that, you know, we, we agree with based on that data. But we did want to take the, the GPS data to essentially confirm what they're showing. Not that it would necessarily be something to base it up, but just as a way to confirm that, with, uh, those findings. And it, it is based on where people are working, which may sound, you know, for, for a senior living facility, it, the, the work destination is maybe more than you're going to retail places to some extent, but fifty-five and over, there are still a, a big proportion of that population that would be commuting to, to a job or to a workplace. That have retired, they need a little bit of help enough to live in this, this development. Um, our tenth thing was called mitigation strategies. And we, we do want some mitigation strategies reviewed for the impacts of Polack intersection. We've mentioned that they want to look at signal timing, uh, and as those get developed, to look more closely at what's being proposed for the mitigations, whether signal timing is going to be sufficient, whether there needs to be some changes to lane usage, other things like that, whether there needs to be, you know, there's a lot of options for what, and what could be done. And essentially, noting that mitigation should take place there, the, the advocacy team will generally come up with options that we will then review later to make sure they're sufficient for what's, uh, those aren't established yet at this point. We don't have specifics of, of. The Q and R session was an extended lookdown, uh, and showed that the queues would be extending further from the Polack intersection. And we do, you know, believe that mitigation should be proposed to, to address that. And that actually, in one way, brings us to the, uh, additional access route to Rentham Road. That can be a way to, and need some of that, so that individuals going that way could have an alternative. I, I noticed too, just coming in specifically going through that intersection, when it queued up the last, uh, Rentham Road, that an individual waiting there deciding they were just going to take that right and get away from the signal. So there needs to be some traffic already going up that way to get away from the signal. The traffic signal at the site driveway, we, we want to see that revised to incorporate a right turn lane. I'm sorry, the, uh, sight distance, uh, sorry. Oh, uh, when we were looking at the analysis of their signals, I guess that was, uh, we wanted to see what their signal warrant would look like with less right turns shown on there, because people could take right turns on there. And essentially what we want to see is, are we sure that this will still need for a warrant if that is, that, that ever is reduced? Um, and then they, they mentioned, uh, I think we made heard from town that there could be an expectation of no right turns on red, which would then, you know, modify that policy, if that's something that is intended to be included there. And then the right turn lane, we want to see incorporated, self, uh, approaching the side driveway, having a right turn lane there, allowing vehicles as they're slowing down to get out of the, the traffic, which is something that was not shown on there. So that is the basis of the traffic stuff, and then also the comments on the site plan, uh, and the access and look through the site plan. So going through that, again, from, from the traffic and circulation standpoint, we're, we're very specifically looking at how vehicles and people flow through the site, making sure it's safe, making sure it's accessible. Uh, the first thing we looked at was parking. They do provide parking to make the required, enough parking to make the requirements, uh, based on the bylaw. Uh, so based on the, the bylaw, there's one point five, uh, requiring one point five parking spaces. They propose a thousand parking spaces for the eight or three units, so that does meet the bylaws. So we have, we had the laws to that. We, we do want to see from that, that, I'm sorry, play through the overall amount of parking spaces. So the advocate, we would want to demonstrate that a typical delivery vehicle can circulate through the, the development safely, and that fire trucks, ambulances can all navigate through the site plan that they're proposing. To make sure that if there's an incident, yeah, emergency vehicles can get where they need to be. We, we noted that with the travel lines entering the site were higher than we did, um, eleven-foot travel lines to shoulders. It's difficult to be able to enforce it. These are things that we would want to see that update on our site plan to ensure that this, this is a safe location, safe accessible location. The preview of the intersection will be shown. I believe they said they're going to be working on updating that as well as the rest of the design, but there were issues with how, you know, the intersection was showing on initial plans, because that's something that would be updated. And then we did touch on this earlier, but given the large size, we do recognize that that might be considered an additional driveway to Rentham Road for the western parcel. So this would better distribute this site generated trips, and it would provide redundant emergency access to the development. Uh, currently, the way it's shown, the, the two accesses are very close, two access points are close to each other for a closed road, and then even closer for the driveway off that road. If there is an emergency incident, that area could get, you know, could be challenging for first responders. that area could get, you know, could be challenging for first responders to move through as things get developed. If there's, you know, a large number of people evacuating, it will make multiple points of access. But we do see that as a concern. Additional locations where we call that additional locations, where it should be sidewalk, you know, capture whose paths and other bicycle combinations to have the circulation of their site. Well, thank you, one update on construction details, having crosswalks that are a little wider, endings that depress that assuming where this is, especially where this is a senior 55-plus area, having a steep driveway down to the sidewalk, might not be the most practical if you don't have spots where there's some low areas to stop from, even if you're not seeing it correctly. We also asked the advocates team to clarify the design speed. Once we know the design speed again, the area, we can better evaluate if the curves and the radiuses are appropriate for proper traffic movement through the road as proposed. Identify locations where traffic coming would be appropriate within the site area and put my efforts on it, or to refer to additional radiation to see on that as the site plan to help. And then we, one other note could be found here, was that the existing sidewalks and driveway neighbor really have right of way on Main Street. If we don't need accessibility standards and have a little bit of review, the sidewalk that's going on the side of Main Street, it's not ADA compliant, it's not greatly accessible for people to use. And we recommend that the town require advocates to reconstruct the sidewalks, at least for a big portion of the case. I've heard about those demonstrated here, there's been, I guess, more discussion on how far that will actually extend. And that's something that gets, you know, to level more through the data process of peer review as we, you know, give our comments, get responses to those comments, and then continue to work through making sure everything is done the proper way in testing. That is, those are the comments that we prepared and put together. And, you know, there are many of those, especially on the traffic side of it, having some responses to already in the presentation. And we'll look for, you know, that data that they're collecting out based on some of these will be reviewed that as it comes in, as the comments are probably responding to. These are part of the nice sense.
Thank you, appreciate that. There's a copy of that report that you posted. It's on the right foot. I saw some people in the audience watch copy of it, so we appreciate your apparent intent. I do have, I'm going to turn it over to some questions, especially for the board that actually wanted to see and all that part of it. I think we'll start with the board first, because there's quite a few things that I'd like to see. The chairman, you didn't start, I think I missed. The report is very, those comments are some very fine ones, so I appreciate that. Was there a timeline developed for the response back to these comments? I know you just received the statement that, but I'm assuming that's a kind of response.
Yeah, we, you know, we were well along. The response is frankly, given the amount of time that we've had and comments, we're going to go back to that go, and you're today. We are still in review of the May 2025 addendum, part of the record. We anticipate, as our conversation, the peer review that they're wrapping up that review shortly and, you know, prior to submitting a comprehensive response, we really want to see that first. And from that point, I would anticipate that it would take us probably above two weeks' time to prepare a comprehensive response.
Okay, thank you. Next question, I guess, is to the town that represents the town. The report number two talks about the actual counts from May 9. Was that a one-day count? Or was there more additional days? You did comment on that day that it was significant, you know, the existing traffic volume seemed disproportionately low, not up here, which represented a normal patron groups or term complaint. And that was so that was made red flag. That's the third day before Mother's Day, was, you know, in comments about both sides researching that. Was there any research comments since the 25th to indicate why those? I heard the T counts of the stadium was, you know, perhaps in the future, we can take a look at whether conditions, Mother's Day, is that, is that weekend coming up, is your Thursday before Mother's Day? Is there any speculation why that is a little known? So why?
Specifically, what we were calling out on that was the volumes coming in and out of the Gulf Horse Drive Way itself, that that may be higher at other times of the year. And that's not something that's, that's potentially something that wasn't accounted for. So we were specifically speaking to the counts for the driveway, for the existing driveway that they proposed.
Is it typical that one day is the testing of something with this issue standard?
Yeah, that is.
Okay, so you're noticing that this is, what made you believe that this was a disproportionately low number? Why was that comment? That's a very definite statement, and I guess I'd like to take that a little bit into the why.
This is Chairman, I'm here on this call. Thank you. Thank you for having us tonight. For the public that kind of went back to, I apologize. Can anyone hear me okay? Yes. In our industry, typically the road plus data collection is done over a longer two days at the same time period when trying to look for the anomalies. Usually it means reaching out to town staff or others to make sure that it's not a dev hot event, that there's no way to detours going on and things like that. When John and I reviewed the study, it just looked disproportionately low coming in and out of the NCC driveway. So that's a question, was that an offset? You know, I went back to, I forget what website it was, like basically not completely raining. So, you know, which would have answered it in part, but it is a whole day.
So you're saying it was a rainy day?
No, yeah, it was a full part of the day.
It was a rainy day at all?
And you say, okay, that makes sense. It's in the years, we have a little bit, but it's still something that experts should project. And we talked with the year process, this out, we will finish the, you know, it's now going to be September, so we just pulled it back in session, maybe a quick day or four on Main Street to make sure that, that whatever was done in May 4 wasn't an off day. Another check is to do a roadway count on Main Street is pretty cheap and quick. I quote, I basically believe that Main Street volumes were completely off based on other data sources that we've been able to look at. But it's also cheap enough where it can dispel other questions by moving that day through a general. So I would advise them to do that because if they clarify certain things more broadly instead, but whether it's the easeless for the bookings, doing another count while, and that's actually going on, makes sense. The only thing going to fall is that the activity in NCC is there today, is going to be there tomorrow. So whatever that number is, is applied to the duty condition within the other project. The reason we want to see is how in all does it actually affect the operations or the backups of the queues that might occur on the day, when they're not always all functional to make sure that we have warrants in. Right now, John had talked about terms warrants, but that really is just looking at the technical justification and the threshold for trying to introduce something like a traffic signal. So we asked comments of that, or how that should be tested in a slightly different way to see if it's still tricksy or not. It's not something that should be taken lightly. A traffic signal is not the panacea for all things traffic, as you probably understand. Adding another place to stop on Main Street is not something that should be taken lightly. But if warrants it, based on the whole bill, it should be at least considered. The NCC traffic wasn't necessarily fully on top of it, is full potential, but that could help warrant something like traffic control place. With that in mind, it's something that the town has considered that the roadway, the driveway, the geometry, all those things really need to be, you know, day one, but something like traffic signals should action away until it's actually worked. So we can track the need for certain things. But some of our key studies, not just what might be necessary with the whole bill, but when might be necessary, that's something that there is.
All right, so what I think I just heard was the regulation that this should be a place, not just that.
Correct, and I think it doesn't, in our opinion, have to be a whole series of intersections. I think it can start with the traffic now, Main Street, to see how the ways to study before we investigate further.
Okay, thank you for those comments. So I'm also going to go to the elbow street, and perhaps you look at. I would offer that there is a comment that I'll make, that the town is looking at cut throughs right now. And there's a cut through that comes from that neck of the woods through Pine Grove down toward Pine Grove, that the town is actually putting speed bumps into. They're not there today, but they're going to assume. And the select board has got a board going on that recently. So that certainly would be considered. Whether the cut through through Elbow Street is done, this would need additional traffic and a lot of other things at that same. I'm going to keep going, the rest of the board can jump in if that's, I just want to ask. But the next question I, the biggest, next question I have is going from, you know, point number 10. So that's point number 10, basically says the capacity, you know, using a multiplying out, traffic increasing, I think I saw 1% here going up. And the end result is that the current service levels are C, and by the time the 2031 comes, it goes to D. Now, I heard the applicant basically said D is perfectly acceptable, at least that is, that was the implication. And I saw that and said, can you, I want to understand a little bit more the difference between a C and a D is, because this is a special requirement, and this is certainly going to impact the decision that gets put on. So can you, if I could, more about the difference between C and D? And I apologize to the rest of the board, but I would love to hear.
I think just to try to reply back on what Mr. Peishow mentioned, during the presentation is that the level service is more or less just a range of delay that's applied to a tighter, tighter type of traffic control place, whether it's a stop sign or a traffic signal. The difference between a level service C and a D is on average about 10 seconds of delay overall usage. Their projected delays, at least in the initial report, were not as severe as 10 seconds. But when you compound 10 seconds for hundreds and hundreds of vehicles, that's where, it's something that particularly with the case of social terminus, worthwhile considerations that mitigate the impacts of the project and not just get to a level service D. And that's all we're currently discussing. We don't have any conclusions, we don't have any answers at this point, but we've asked them to look at different things that can bring it back down so that there's no negative impacts of traffic through the section. A lot of that is still in front of us as a chair.
Can you go back to four?
Yeah, but the concept of it is that just adding delay, no impact, this, they still a lot of time at the side access point, but they proposed no immediate disorder, and that's not normal. And even the latest word, level service staff, where hundreds of conditions is still something that warrants discussion about how many of those are to be placed.
Number four, crash analysis shows intersection of South Main and FLS has a crash rate that exceeds the district average. Can you define, talk about the district, city district average? What are we talking, it's not telling you, what district would be able to attract, if you're in mind.
Yeah, so to clarify, district is talking about the mass duty districts. So the state is broken up into six different districts. And so the two things that I would look at is how the crash rate there compares to the average of the rest of the state, and how it compares to the average of the district. And it was, it's above average, there are more crashes there than in average, it's an exception.
That's something, that's something worth talking about, that's a limitation, right? Before, before they were talking about this more, Main Street, that in the middle of the state.
Yeah, the four that were mentioned from police reports along Main Street are specific, we're specifically looking at the post-site driveway, that area where the curbs are, that's where those crashes took place. The location where above average is at the last intersection, that's where there's already an above average number of crashes occurring, and adding volume to that could potentially, you know, increase the number of collisions. So we want to look at safety pattern measures to mitigate that.
Thank you. To move to five now, the speed, the speed mass election shown for higher speeds than normally appropriate for Main Street, radar feedback, speed signs, and other traffic calling measures should be considered to improve the site distances by reducing the speeds. So I had noticed that there was some activity by the town, and I think there was some focus in the last couple of months with, I'd say, additional presence here. I saw, I saw additional, which was there, I'm not sure what it meant, it wouldn't be all, but just as a spectator, enough that street falls, who was at 7:45 today, that was down, backed down on 10:30, and through the last full guard, red light, we're talking about later in the day, 11, certification, I feel like it's that. But notice, notice the traffic, so when you do this traffic studies, and we know that the speeds are high, the higher speeds, when we're reading, basically indicate that you need to have more space for two cars, right? Simply, you know, what, can you elaborate what that does to traffic study? No, I guess the question is, is, you know, I would want to consider the fact that that is a higher speed area. I've gone up and down, just 17 and a half years, just walking smooth little ride, and so at, at both, beginning of the day, end of the day, it'd be traffic, I was going through it, up and down. And I said that, that scene hasn't really changed at all. So what does that do to traffic?
Sure, so the way speed relates to the traffic study, to the point, yes, cars should space themselves a little bit further when you're going at higher speeds, but are unsafe, but that's not really what this study is looking at. What we're looking at is site distance. So site distance, stopping site distance is one of the first ones we look at. And that's, you know, if a tree falls into the road, if you come around the corner, by the time you see that object in the road that you need to stop, do you have enough time to stop before you get to it? And so there's a lot of factors that go into it, perception, reaction, so you have to perceive it's there, realize I need to stop, hit the brakes, and then your car has to come to a stop. So there's equations to determine how quickly that happens. And so as the speeds increase, the amount of distance you need to stop also. And so as the speeds increase, the amount of distance you need to stop also increases. And then where we get into that door, a slight like this, looking at the left turns going in, that was one of the areas that we mentioned that we looked at, where if cars are coming faster down and over that crest, if you're turning left, there's less time for them to see that you're now in front of them and stop in time to some wooden accident. And then also looking at the sight lines or when the side driveway is under stop control. And whether that's, whether it's a stop sign there, because it's an orange signal again in the future, or whether it's under stop control because there's a power issue and it's a flashing red light, being able to see far enough, be near distance to know that it's safe to pull out without effectively applying drive or substantial program, making sure there's sufficient sight distances there. So as these speeds get higher, you need to be able to see farther away to avoid pulling out from the side.
Okay, thank you. So let me go to six then. So number six, you call out a rate zero, you know, wasn't included in their calculation. I think they said comment about changing the look there. If you're coming down that hill at higher than posted speeds, which seems to be the record, what does it do to queuing? So if you're coming down a curvy road, and it is curvy, and I'm asking about the site distance and evaluation of that soon. But what does that do when you come down that curvy road into a stoplight with a zero? Right now, it's not 200 and 0 rate, but what does that do?
So the question is, how does the speed relate to queuing and other potential for backups? And what do I need for the proposed traffic signal on the main access point? The speed characteristic is hoping to maybe partially mitigate. We see the dynamic speed tax center in Ikea. That point have potential with a lot of industry complications that are being brought by a few miles per hour. It's not likely to take from what the data had shown that it was 44 miles an hour coming down the hill in what they call an 85% of speed. And that's what we use for design purposes. It's the speed average, 85% of the driving population going after thunder. So it's used as a test of a reasonably active of higher speed. The other factor is considered more or less outlined. But that 85% of speed, if it doesn't kill a 344, that attribute might change by 3 miles per hour. But it's still good idea to resist it. And that's why we don't take the traffic level lightly. Because what we have to look at is, you have the signal there and there's traffic that backs up or queues. Particularly when you work down, you have to incur and the down slope. Now we change the vantage point for some of those things that, again, the signals have been still from us. But the characteristics of the specific access point require not to give the traffic a light. And so putting down a hill at higher speed, you've suggested that this was a separate initiative. As part of the proposed design, we consider consideration regularly as going into the driveway. Because as we imagine, we're going at a speed. We don't want any sort of traffic control place or the access point itself or traffic. It exacerbates things like rear lane crashes while trying to make the access in and out of the site more superior or light. So.
So, so today's my Sunday. But what happens when you put a light on the bottom of it? You have queuing at that light and now it's sorted. And what, what's the effect of that? I guess I'd like, that might need some analysis because I'd like to see how these typical day with typical traffic is going to happen. How far back is the queuing on a freeway on a normal day? What does that do with the speed? How do they, do they have enough time to slow down?
Yeah, and those are all aspects that we're currently looking at in the end. As an assessment analysis, so again, that's why we want to make sure that the threshold, the warrant analysis is thoroughly reviewed with a couple of different things.
Can you answer the question?
And John mentioned that with a right turn when you're putting down the side driveway, those right turn vehicles are not subject to the same level of delay or traffic conflict. So quite often in the work, it's to do for a fine traffic conflict. Real off of discount portion of the right turn volume because they're not, certainly not the signal. They're not subject to the same delays. Here, trying to take a right out of Elbow Street is not another backup. It's a lot easier to take a right than it is a left. So we want to make sure that, you know, we can best the need for long term. But as I mentioned earlier, that's kind of whole bills, you know, the parts of the timeline and the monitoring, because that's what it actually warranted. So like in the case where.
That's into the future, I think.
In the case where you are only making a search, put in place a pond, it's not at the end of the road. But it might be a while for them to build out a search force to actually justify it here. That's your.
Correct. We did have one of our projects up north that we had. We did deal with that one another time.
We didn't.
For the detail. But there's lots of things we can figure out. Sidewalk commented, you guys, too, commented on that. I would also like to see what, an earlier meeting, you commented about a lot of the old senior center that's there. We're concerned about two groups of people. And every other resident here is maybe three. So you commented about the overcrowd on the seniors walking inside and outside on the sidewalks. That's very sorry. I know for a fact that if, like the, like the senior center, senior builders down there, walk down there, across through these intersections, down to the last one, and Main Street. And there, it's home, I guess. I'm not sure we call that place in the initiative for. That's certainly an issue too. So sidewalks are certainly a concern that I have. There's a few more that I'm not going to put into that. But before I invite you to those usual terminals to, you know, to the questions. But I guess since I'm in our office, I'd like to see if they have any questions from the board first.
Yeah, I have questions.
Okay, I think the board will go first, though.
All right, no, there's more questions. I guess why don't we, if we could raise our hand, gentlemen stay in our seat. And I think if everybody's comfortable with talking loud, then I think we just keep the same forum and talk loud. So not sure, we have the seat up, hand up first, but let's start with the gentleman most of the way down. Do you see any people on the record?
I think I'll run ahead.
If you could keep the questions through or comments through.
Not sure who's, who the responsible party is. I'm hearing a hundred and, I'm going to use the word 20 because it's a round number, of people coming out of the site at places between seven and eight in the morning. I don't know how long that is going to take to come out of that site using the stoplight. And how long using motion time methods to back up parking in the road. Is that the responsibility of these people? Is it the responsibility of the planning board? Is it the responsibility of the state? I don't know. I just know that, I just look at what happened at Tennessee Street not too long ago, where traffic used to flow right through. And putting in a stoplight in the morning, boom, everything backs up. I look at this intersection and you're talking about 120 people leaving that area in the morning. They're going to come back. How many cotton, how many people in queue are you going to have to go turning left and right to go back into that site? Are you going to have only three? Are you going to have five, six? You know, I don't know.
Thank you. Would you have a hand right soon?
So the analysis that we've done, that the viewer has, shows the answers to what your question is. And that is, if you put a signal at this location, new driveway, at 800 units, 100 vehicles trying to access Main Street, some of them are trying to make a right thirty or so, or trying to make a left. What it shows is that the average queues on Main Street would be about four vehicles during that time period. And to put that in context.
That's 25 cycles, say for 100.
Well, the cycle length, the number of times the.
Well, you just said four cars per cycle.
The number of times the signal cycles, it's going to, it's going to be pretty quick. We think that it'll be, you know, about maybe 40 to 60 second cycle length for the signal. And that's, that's part of a design that's going to be vetted by, by Purdue. But most of the time, that light is going to rest in green. Most of the time, you're going to have that green light. One vehicle a minute or so, I'm going to trip the knee to turn that red on Main Street. Right? So it's, it's not going to happen every, every cycle. The times on the driveway are not high enough to regularly stop traffic on Main Street.
But if you've got, if you've got 100 coming out in an hour, you might have that.
Well, the analysis shows that it will not be tripped regularly, frankly. And if it does get tripped, it will be for a very short duration of time to allow that one or two.
Okay.
So that is, that would go back to. All right, next question.
Uh, Danielle, from Warren Drive. There's been talk of potential development on Diamond Hill Road at that intersection, the old Cedar's, the potential grocery store. I don't know what the status of that project is, but is the board monitoring that? So in the event it does progress, we can do an overlay of that traffic report against this. And the second point too, is that the developer, they are reducing it down to 800, but preserving the right to increase the number of units. So will the board continue to monitor that and overlay all of that together? Because I'm just concerned that mitigation measures for just specifically this are not going to address all the concerns of any future development, whether on that site or at that intersection.
So to answer part of the question I have. The board, the board would obviously wonder anything that actually comes up in that, that's involved. So you feel maybe it's going to do and the rest of that, right now it's a lot of this. I agree. The conditions that, that are basically acceptance or denial of the receipt will define how many they get billed and what they're proposing or what they're doing not. So we're going to look at that, there's a better proposal. We read 16, now it's down to eight. So we're looking at that and I commented earlier, I'll be looking to define future activities conditions in the actual, or denial of that. Speaking of one person. Next question. Gentleman over there, did you?
Yeah, I did. Again, to piggyback on what you're saying, I live in a side, side law, high press trial. I just, I guess it's a bit like, these people, there's no study, every participant in the back of the road classed a whole lot of this development. There's no study on the traffic education that's going to happen on the back of the road time. I guess the presence of the target, once again, is going to shorten the extent. These people will be left with a backup. Right now, it's starting to back up past by a cross trial. Every morning, every evening, getting out of that cold sack of theirs is impossible. But it's not even considered in this traffic study because it's our, you know, since Jerry Victor. I see people represented from the target, it's not what they're, it's interesting for the traffic we're going to face there. And then the other thing I'd like, just please, this notion that this is an over 55 community that's going to not generate traffic to me is just nonsense. It's like, again, it's just a way that this group can be, I guess, relieve of any responsibilities of future traffic education that this is going to get. Let's face it, these people are 55, they're still going to be working for 15 to 20 years. They're going to have kids that are working. The notion that it's because it's a higher level community that's not generating traffic is just nonsense. It's just something, it's some bullshit that's being used to reduce the response, the foundation response. And they're not going to incur or rectify the situation again. They're 100% responsible for it right now. Thanks.
So just before, just to reiterate one comment, I know you mentioned representative from Wunsaka that's been here. That was your previous director of planning for the city of Wunsaka, John Paverini, from what I understand is no longer employed in the city. I don't really know who the new contact would be, but, you know, we, obviously I've been fielding numerous emails, phone calls, meetings with Wunsaka residents and I'm happy to continue to. So please, you know, don't hesitate if you feel that you're not the expert, you know.
Well, the pretty obvious to, I mean, there's just, we're not even included in the study, so we're not, it's Wunsaka.
Can I, we have the other one, this right here.
Tasha Walensky, Edward Circle. So picking back on the 55 plus community, one of the questions I wrote down at the top was that you're saying that it's 25 cars per 100 units. But you're saying that that's an average that you've taken from other studies? How outdated or old is that data and that average number that you're taking? Is that something that's, you've got over the past few years? That's data from 10 years ago? Has people's driving patterns changed? Because I find it a little suspect that only 100 units are going to have 25 cars. This would maybe an 85 plus community? Sure. 50?
Sure. So we've used the latest available national data to estimate these trips. I don't have the data right in front of me, but I know that that data is within the past five years or so. And I will say that that manual is updated regularly. I think this update needs to be pretty soon. What we see when these updates occur is that, you're right, people travel differently as time moves on. COVID is a perfect example of how traffic patterns change. Where more people are now working remotely if they do work. More people are inclined to vinyl or means of transportation if those are available to them. And so what we've seen historically with these updates of the national standards is that those trip rates tend to go down as a function of those other types of ways of traveling. We know that that's especially the case for residential uses. That said, you know, we do many of these types of projects. We go back on many occasions and we actually measure the performance of these types of projects. And I can say that these national standards are quite accurate, if not slightly conservative in terms of estimating trips. But, you know, I, that data is fairly fresh. And when it does get updated, the trend has been that the trip rates tend to go down as well as those.
So if it's five years outdated, that would be 2020, which is when COVID hit, which is when everybody went home. Which is when traffic patterns went down. But in the past two years, everybody's been forced back to the office. I was remote for five years, six months ago, I had been forced back in. So I'm now back on the road. So even now, it's going to take, not this latest refresh, like you said, it's due in a few months or upcoming.
it's going to take, what, five or 10 years for it to be accurate to display what current traffic patterns are after recovering from being on the road from COVID.
So, to ask a further follow-up question on that, I'm going to ask our community. So, I know that when we were close to COVID, we were adjusting the COVID percentage on our studies. What, are you finding what's justified at this point? And the methodology that was used for the counts? How are you collecting it? Would you say it was reasonable, or the methodology? I think I know what you mentioned.
I was going to pass the answer to your question, but also, please, let me keep this up. Sorry, this is Jared. The question is, are there still necessary COVID-related adjustments to the data? Yes, no. Those volumes have come back with roar, as you probably all seen. Even though some people still work remote. You might find that Mondays and Fridays are traditionally lighter. People may have workable days, or trying to couple them with the weekend. And as to data that I'm sure we've seen, we've seen throughout the Commonwealth, particularly in the last two years, as even agencies like MassDOTT stopped doing this for a few years. From a trip generation standpoint, how many trips in this facility generate with 800 units? That national data is the same dataset that we use. That a lot of the condition, which I believe this research has used of the Institute of Transportation as a trip generation panel, is widely used with a wealth of data. We've also done similar projects where we've been able to review and test. He's speaking correctly and accurately, both technically and technically. We don't have any dispute. It is limited to a restricted 55 unit facility. That threshold is roughly 160 in the morning of COVID. Wait, those key hours total, all entering and exiting with multiple corrections, is reasonably accurate and appropriate for use in the analysis.
So, let me ask this question. So, the 55 unit overall, certain percentage of that is going to be- But there's also going to be a certain percentage of the call?
Yes.
Is the peak travel time the right time to measure? And I'm asking that question because I brought you this.
I don't think so.
Also, we can measure on a Wednesday instead of a Friday? Because you just said that people stay home on Mondays and Fridays.
Right. The data, I think, was on a daily day. As typically do, as traffic with the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, because it's going online. The trends would be over 55s can have slightly lower peak for those that are still working. But, I can tell you with a high degree certainty that the most conservative way to limit is the way the study looks at it currently, which is that data specifically counted between 7:00 AM and towards 10:00 PM. Is hopefully, both a peak meter times traffic on Main Street and other areas. So, that's why we don't have any issue with time curves or general approach to how, and when the date is selected. What I did here before, is pretty good sense to do a quick check of the volumes of Main Street, just to read the part of what's in here.
Yeah, sounds like that was a recommendation.
Yeah, and that's something that's really appropriate, just to-
No.
Still, can I ask a related question? Hopefully, you're open here, maybe. So, John, you mentioned using census data to look at the community to work information in terms of routes. Is that the 2020 census data, or is it American community survey?
That gets updated every two years. So, there's journey to work data that's provided by the US Census. You can look at very time blocks through that, clearly, that's updated for the last two years.
And you suggested using the app which you use, GPS routes. What data sources are, like, is it WAI, is it Google?
And that's just as a check. That's not something that you would base your analysis on, but as a way to check, you know, if you look at a deep time, is your phone saying the fastest way is along Franklin Road or last Boulevard? Whether you're using, checking on Google, checking through WAI, just to verify a couple of those assumptions about how someone can get from the site to, say, Boston, is the way that traffic would actually be tracked.
There's a follow-up to that. What I just happened to do, just a moment, I was down to pick up in the field. I parked on Melville Street, and I was there early, I was very early, 7:15, and I said, all right, this is Westwood, probably Sam's Community of Boston, which is a very, you know, big area. I'm sitting on my phone on Google Maps, just as an informal check of what we might want to look at. We probably agree with the regional distribution of where trips might be destined and turning to work, like using the US Census data, we think that's reasonable. It's more of the fine tuning, but John said, and I can see it, because when I was standing at Main Street end of Alloville Street, I said, which way should I take? It probably doesn't run through the road, not the last. So, those are the nuances that are worth a check. Whatever they might pull, the census might use, Alloville or Redcomb, might get pulled off of the street. So, like, slightly impacts everything that's worth a check. And it's not that it's boldly scientific, but it's worth checking on a couple of cases, say, because, you know, whoever's going to work, who uses their phone on a regular basis, make sure, just don't break down, take another group, and you can take another group, give it a save to 10 minutes. You know, most of the population uses them these days, and that's why it's worth a check to say, on a secondary basis, leaving the analysis void on Main Street, and going to whatever, what's the line to be trying to receive. So, that's some of the checks that they're going to make. But it's based on a blend of the raw data, but also the practical side of the user.
Okay, I wanted, I wanted to confirm, thinking maybe you were suggesting maybe it was, like, not myself or me, and just where even we're going.
Not necessarily.
Thank you.
Do you guys agree upon the sense that the education is part of the best part of this?
Um, we agree all this afternoon, to walk through what we have, where it comes down to. Yeah, it is, it is. And it makes me feel, um, definitely, um, yeah.
Okay, so, what are your questions, or the way to write it?
Hi, here's Sarah St. Six Eight Hundred Street. I have time to talk about something. The gentleman said a good portion of over 55s are still commuting to work. And then he said that a good portion of those being commuting to work are working in the region. Be told to call up, I'm not in the back sample.
Yeah, I don't hear anything.
That's good. Good.
Okay.
I need it, because I just have to work it. But anyway, over 55, are we filled out by the work of seven, five, nine, five, or eight past? They work seven to eight, three to 11, 11 to seven, they work shifts. So, you're saying now, from seven to nine, in the morning, when people were going to be leaving or coming or back? That's timing, okay.
That's what I was getting at, your question.
Yeah, I have a question, yeah.
But can I have that?
Yeah, the comment I was intending to make at the time was that individuals who are not employed could be going to complete locations or things like that, to leave their house and going to shop, not necessarily going to a job. And just indicating that some of those locations are where you're supposed to be going to, not just to job locations. So, that's what I was asking.
So, all of this is happening, we're like, northbound Main Street. From the original traffic in NCC, north to Blassey. What about the traffic on the other way? I live off Fairway. It can take me 20 minutes to take a left and a turn on Main Street at peak hours. I work the second half. I work, leave my house at 5:05 at night. I have to hit Commerce Street on the other side now. I would make it out of my street until 5:00. Because that's how long I'm sitting. Are there really studies on the other half, Main Street up, that he says is my best?
The question, I guess, is, how do you clarify it? Going southbound, is stop on counts part of the process going up the hill?
When we look at the post-study area, the normal distribution of drift that might head to the south, the previous means that it has to the north and that way. There are a number of low volume sites that are south of there, between NCC and the state line or the US Census that's built from the south of there. But with a lot of drifts that were projected to the south, and the characteristics of the district between, it was unlikely that whatever study, if they went a little bit late, that there would actually be any material change or improvements that would change the scene of the pulling of traffic overall of the traffic. And John, certainly, that was a high and low volume decision that popped up amongst the different studies.
Okay, coming off of that, the Fairway to Road finale of Donovan Hill, also a damn app. There was cut through all day. I think, because that is very, for sure, the public residents can say, that's how they get there. How would those streets would be controlled speed-wise? There are huge differences. How are they, someone could sit there and say, oh, you're going too fast, you're going to get that hit, because there's line goes on Master Street. Like, that's uncertain. My bus stop, my kid's bus stop, East End, is on the top of Main Street, a line, four side line.
I follow along.
Did you follow, did you follow, did you follow?
I follow, I'm up there, and she turned around on the side of the, the old.
Oh, yeah, yeah, exactly, that's my one stop.
Okay, I follow, I follow.
There is zero side line for his, uh, zero. I have all my grandparents and hash drive over the east front lawn to get out of the way of the traffic.
I, with the curves, I am concerned, but next time I'll talk about it.
Because the bus stops are a big issue. And with people going out, or they want out of the old ways, because they do lack it of, something needs to be done, it's, and also, there needs to be sidewalks, self, that as well, because it is equal distance between shop, 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 and the shops with lower prices on the south side, such as Price Row, Ocean State and Holly. The local prices in the south side. If I'm over 55, and I'm paying whatever for rent, I'm going to go cheaper to grocery stores. And you're saying only, like, a couple hundred cars in a, a peak time to crosswalks and to beat out the two? Because they're going out there, and there's my single crosswalk avenue.
How do you get a sidewalk?
Yeah, it's slower.
Okay, so, sidewalks are concerned.
Future.
Way over here in this section.
So, I have two, Warren Hall, I don't live on Gen Avenue, I have two comments. One is that, in perspective of the language being used in the presentation, I think we have to be careful about words like substantially reduced, ample, time. I think that from the original overlay to the current one, it's different. It's actually more than the original plan. I think with respect to the data, what is not shown in those study locations is Rentham Road to Rentham Street at the intersection by the fire station. Those of us who live on that part of town, and I can tell you for myself, if you're going to send me, I have changed my behavior, you can stand at Avenue, so I can go right and right onto my road, or left on Main Street, so I can get the light at Blassey, so that I don't have to deal with that conglomeration down there, which is dangerous, I can't see. So, I think data, aggregate data is great, but if you really want to know what's happening with people of Bellham and Wunsaka, to leave out. You need, you need to have open-ended questions to community members. Where is your commute? What problems have you had? How many near misses? How many times has there been an accident? I know that there's one fatality on Rentham Road, and I'm very concerned about this. Well, why be safer to have an access road from Rentham Road? That requires a huge amount of consideration, just with the culprit situation right now. So, I think the dataset needs to be looked at, and have to be really careful about saying something is better. It's different, whether it's better is open to interpretation.
I am, just to follow up with what you just said. I'm looking, I live on Rachel's circle, which is right off Main Street, and the end of Rentham Road. We're seeing, we're seeing a lot of traffic that has been, that are going, 18 wheelers that are now starting to come down Rentham Road. I've seen 18 wheelers, more and more of them, down Main Street. I've seen 18 wheelers trying to get through the, you've got the Amazon, trying to get through the intersection where the firehouses. Now, the firehouse, I've actually sat in that traffic for many cycles, for a long time, trying to get out of Rentham Road, trying to get into, either trying to take a left to get onto Main Street, or taking a right to try and get to South Main or Blassey. So, with the increase in the traffic that's already there, I have a concern, number one, with the firehouse that's sitting there. And if there's an alarm that goes off, and the traffic in that intersection is all tied up, how is that a rescue? How is that a fire truck? How is anybody to try and move out of the way, so allows you these emergency vehicles to come on with that? So, I don't know if anybody's thinking about, you know, how are you going to address that? Or are you just going to close the firehouse and relocate it? So, I think we need to take that into consideration as well.
Very question.
Yeah. And I don't know if-
Can I follow a question on that?
That's a good start, but I, and I wonder, as we go forward, it may sound counterintuitive, but maybe we need to block outs in the intersections.
Oh, what?
Block out, so people don't sit in waiting for bikes, to allow proper access from the cars.
I know what you're talking about. It's the lines.
Doesn't stop on the road.
On South Main.
Yeah. I've got to tell you, I've been in the traffic on South Main, where the box lines are. And people park, or don't even, don't stay off of the box lines. I've seen it on, on, uh, uh, what is it? Blassey Boulevard, over by, um, High Mall. There's another box line there.
But, but to start.
I know, I know what you're saying, but people do not have a box line.
I understand.
Okay, so.
You seem to be wrong here, and you seem to be listening to constantly a false position right now. So, I'm taking a pledge. The other piece is, not Main Street?
No.
You don't know the fire station?
Yeah. This is still not.
Not far?
Right, correct. I don't know that at all.
Okay. So, but since your point on the fire station and that piece there, that is a piece of this study, is I'm still in discussion, and we'll, we'll consider that, bring that over, as this certainly is.
Certainly, you should.
It is, it's a very serious issue.
I have a second question, in regards to the new signal that's being proposed for the driveway into the community. Is there going to be a crosswalk there for people to cross? Where there's going to be a button that's going to stop all of the traffic, so that pedestrians can cross the street?
Yes, very important feature. We want this site to be a walkable site, and that's absolutely going to be part of the signal. So, that will be a pedestrian push-button activated signal. You want to cross, stop everybody, and it will also be built for maybe twenty seconds.
And that's another reason for bad young drivers. And there are many of these signals that I've actually- Um, and there are many of these, these, um, signals that I've actually used myself. Where the signal is not long enough to get people to allow them some time to cross the street. So that's a potential hazard right there. You're gonna get, you're gonna get somebody who's gonna get killed or somebody who's gonna be, you know, beat, taken dead. Or you're gonna end up where you're gonna have some having more rear end injuries.
Thank you, British.
Um, gentlemen, in support, please, uh, Tucker on here, Pleasant Street, it's on here. Just to address the box things first. We in the neighborhood, Pickering, around Pleasant, because the box stand absolutely useless. And they, unless you're, it's gonna get to people that are extremely afraid, they might come out and do well. And then, so it's not like we're waiting on them. So I, I think they just, this gentleman mentioned putting up, um, speed signs. Pleasant Street at, now has a regulated digital speed sign. They choose to see how fast that we go as opposed to how fast that we go. So they speed up, there were speed bumps. I appreciate the pounds efforts. I worked on it for two years in this area. They put in, they took it from Elbow Street, they took the rubber ones, and they put them over on, on Pleasant Street. Now, they put in about maybe ten pot lanes from the end of Pleasant on the Pickering side and about maybe fifteen pot lanes from the end on Pleasant. Now, the problem is, between those two sections, that's what's science. At that point, the gases are over there. The, the thirteen on ring is, you mentioned cars going in and out and how many of them are needed. Have you calculated this, when you mentioned, Amazon? You've got Elbow Road, you've got UPS, you've got other, other, uh, DAP or Dash. This type of community will probably utilize that back. And I think that the, the country club is looking to generate more business, not sold down. So that's gonna bring more traffic to get out of there. Not to mention people that live on in that complex, they're buying in to come play, why don't you come play golf? There's more of us. So I don't think this project is a benefit to the citizens developed. It's not anything for, for the citizens, it is money in the pocket, I understand that. How much business being to, I understand that you can develop this property and make it to somewhere. But they're asking for a special permit, a special permit, think what? Now, this was done a while back and it's been played with and manipulated and things end up with us only saying, how did this happen? Well, I'm glad to see that all these people are here. I'm a little disappointed with the board tonight because looking at the parking lot, when I got there at six thirty, I don't know where anyone was in the parking lot. Now, take that into consideration when you do this work, because I'm gonna make it my business to get more people from the town to look into this, to see how it's gonna affect their lives. So it's far from concerned, keep working at it, and Elbow Street needs to be completely in this, this back line condition.
Down to South Main. Steve obviously funded last year, they don't help, the people just raceway. The traffic, that's, that's, they're going out of that handle and everybody but him, I got a constant line of traffic. I mean, there's too much traffic on Main Street that they don't help. Truck drive off, especially the game is on trucks. The, um, the day is easy consideration that track trail is what that hold down there. Bob, they don't want to put the side trucks and trucks, they're gonna stop there. Whereas it's gonna take them a while to shift up and get it up. We're just gonna, that's a poor shot. The people coming down there, uh, obviously the trucks come down there and, you know, they're doing stuff like that. You gotta stay in the room, you gotta stop at the bottom, you know? There's no way you're gonna stop all that way in the middle of it. I, I just hope so, it's, it's just not right. And the other thing is, we might have a whole of fifty five, we cut, we cut a pot. So that's, that's two cars. They put eight hundred in, that's sixteen hundred cars. Even if they use twelve hundred cars, most of them are leaving and coming home at all different times of the day. They're saying that it's only gonna be a hundred cars, we have this in our office. Does that need consideration with regard to the Gulf Force? You know, it's not allowed, it's not allowed in the, uh, community, over there. That would basically, it doesn't, it doesn't add up. But the biggest thing is, like you said, the traffic, coming to help, that would be.
Craig Brokman, from Rome, Matt in Bellinham. Um, I'd wanna pose the same question that Bob, but it goes back in March or April when we first met. Can he see through trees? In, you know, I, I appreciate the T E C report because you talk about how the vegetation is, is limited. So I guess the question would be, is the town gonna use eminent domain to take down the trees to see the intersection? Because the graph that was up on there this, this, or a few, around an hour ago, says that there's a clear line of sight. I live there, there's huge pine trees in people's front yard. Is the town gonna use eminent domain to take those? How do we, how, or can Bob see through trees?
The sideline question.
Sideline.
It's certainly a question I wonder if they address next time.
And us, it's a town.
A curvy, curvy rule like that with the sidelines. I think I mentioned earlier, we do not get to the answer.
The other question I have for the board is, you know, this is all about the overlay district, which I know Mike worked hard on, a lot of people worked hard on. We as the people, do we have the right to revoke it from them? And if so, what's the process? How do you start that?
Okay, and you were, do you have the option to, what was it?
Revoke the overlay district that people worked so hard to get five, ten years ago.
Yeah, so there's always the option for a citizen's petition to change the zoning by law. So all it takes, I mean, I say all it takes. It takes a town heating vote, which is possible to do if you do a citizen's petition. Uh, I would recommend, I mean, if you have a conversation about that.
Well, there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, let me, let me, let me pause for a second to ask for. Okay, one of the, I'll go back to you. So gentlemen, if I should ever break that.
Sorry.
Oh, thank you.
Your name, sir?
Charles Chalos. I live on Pine Road, I've lived there for forty years. I'm very well aware of this area. I used to go through Palatine or working, I'm now retired. Now I have a different view of what happens during the day. Uh, the numbers that I, I see the engineers go to their big looks and say that this is how big cars are coming to go based on the national average. Uh, the national average doesn't work right here because we are a body of a city and that street happens to be one of two arteries to give from that state to four ninety five to one twenty six or Route one forty. Uh, so I'm very concerned of putting the light at the bottom of that hill. I have been out there at the end of Rentham Road and looked up Main Street and see a line of traffic that goes all the way past the Gulf Force. I can't see further than that, but I can see that they go all the way. And the other problem I see is that corner, they don't expend their problem. Their problem is at the bottom of the interest. But the problem is that curb and hill and on a curb, people have been killed there. I walked up there one time during a snowstorm, there's five cars off the road in people's yards because of the hill and the curb. I suggest they think about going further up that hill. Of course, there is a beautiful house up there that has a nice cement, a nice stone wall. If they took that by eminent domain, straight down that curb, reduce the hill, we have a better line of sight from what's on here almost to that light. Without doing that, people are gonna come around that corner and slam into the back of the cars that are backed off of that light. So I think that for most people who are doing this job should start to look further away in both areas because the other intersection is terrible as it is. Uh, and they're just trying to, their interest is next.
That's really.
So, uh, I, I think that again, we need to look further in both directions to mitigate the traffic. So, and just one more second.
I have a little special question. I'm really interested in this, I actually live, um, at what I need to Main Street. So I prefer the top of that one though. And I just wanna kind of love your question or your comment is that, um, it's basically a raceway. Soon you start to make out of, um, that envelope going up to get Bellinham, it's like, it's a raceway all over now. So like, what are you focusing on, like that corner now? It starts at the top. Um, I do work from home for the past time and I investigate about the middle. And I have seen, um, trucks flying down the street that have hiry, some kind of, they realize it's a curb there. I've seen these chases up and down of Main Street. I have seen cars pass each other on Main Street. I did see, um, cars go through the bus. They don't even stop because they're flying up the hill so fast. And they can't stop. And they can't stop. So I think people need to also realize the top of the hill is where it all starts. And then when they get off that show, they touch it and they zip all the way out. I mean, it's right in front of my house and I can see the cars going, going straight up. So, I mean, there's more than just that curb and that. And going back to the traffic trail, yeah, that's my concern, with that backs up, that light right down there, those cars back up because, yeah, in the afternoon, um, when people are coming in or going in, people are coming out of going off it, coming from Massachusetts, it backs up. So if there's, if you're coming down, you're coming over that corner, it doesn't slow down because none of those signs are gonna work. Um, who's saying that I'm thinking, you think there are rates and, I think, I think there's more than ever. It's any, it's any traffic. And often we're doing, and all of this for, for eight hundred units. And then I just asked my, my last question is the construction, you want to do all of this on Main Street? That's the main front, where to get from variety that you're asking, how are you gonna push it out of there? You need to talk about that.
They don't.
Yeah, they don't care, yeah. But I mean, what's gonna happen then? Because I know when there's accidents that happen down here, you can't, traffic trails in front of our house, that you don't get, you name it. You sit there for hours.
Also, they're on the other street and they're gonna stop.
Yeah, I mean, because they can't, once you're, once you get in front of my house, they, they can't turn down any other street. They're stuck. So that's something else to consider.
Thank you. Um, gentlemen, over here, Busher.
I was fifth, and I, I just like to make a few observations, some of the different good comments that have been made. I travel Rentham, Rentham Road and cross Palatine by daily, back. And the intersection in front of the fire station is a nightmare currently. And I have the dirt numerous times, ambulances and fire trucks unable to get in or out because of the traffic. Everyone is trying to move, there is still things for them to move. It's, it's not a situation that works. In order for this to ensure Main Street at eight times would have to be totally reconstructed so in the end of Rentham Road. That would require eminent domain of taking of people's property, probably houses. It is a huge undertaking. That is the current situation. So if we're talking about at eight hundred units, which is obviously logically sixteen hundred more cars as we pointed out here, and that's without people visitors. I, you know, they're talking about thousand cars, it's basically doesn't even make sense. Um, if you're talking that kind of volume increase, when you currently have a nightmare, where the roads need to be reconstructed for peak travel now and Main Street have. And I know at the town meeting, I was one of the people voted to buy the trucking across the street from that fire station and hopefully something can be done to make an improvement, but that's a bit of a curve of how that needs to be done. And, um, Rentham Road, any more ground, it has to be totally rebuilt. And I don't really look forward to that, but the, the I D M G studies doesn't apply. It just doesn't apply. Look back reality, people know what they see. And this current situation is not a hot load as it seems.
Okay, um, I think I'll take one more question before I ask the board to, um, give the questions to gentlemen. Bruce, your name, sir?
Richard God, Jivo Alro. They were always attached side of the space, they all, and followed by the message to come and followed by the hall for classes, that anyhow, I was looking here. For both, I see, um, some of the, like, falls out of this kind of voices. So, that is mostly on appropriate events. They do have the numbers, or this, and climate, or, I mean, it's mad, you know, the numbers compared to the snow and the rain. And the reason I bring that up, seventy nine years living in this area, I've seen that bridge, in the road, underwater twice, two weeks of storm. It's pretty long, because of the bad weather. So every time there's a lot of rain, things get flooded, people get sick, wet shoe comes out, and the swat. Cross over the bridge of Main Road, I mean, that's hard on, it's gonna go all the way around from the side. It's not the good location for the truth, for the next, that's, it's a very flawed, we can replace that. Maybe we'll come close up. All I have to say, because if you did your work, if you're twenty five years, if you're under your floodplains, these statistics would show up because you can see that that sector would be hungry a lot. And for sure, the people who are on the street, who all have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. So at this point, I'd like to, um, ask, see if the board has questions.
I do. Um, it's getting late, so I'll probably agree. Um, until tonight, I never knew what the right of meaning is acceptable. Well, I brought, I brought some, um, to my culture, and I weren't acceptable. So I think we need to do a better job. The man on your behalf is one of the things I probably have, supposed to man. But if you have twenty five hundred vehicles a day, you distribute over that fourteen hours of peak travel time, you're approaching a hundred eighty five vehicles per hour. I'm assuming, you know, if you're gonna buy a vehicle drive, you're gonna let's say seven to five or more. So I need a better education on that. Um, and ideally, we want to look at, is using the emergency road, if they wanna tap it up? If this gets approved, why can't we use an emergency road for emergency as well as the Gulf Force? To try to cipher off traffic on the two different roads? Um, I spoke about earlier with that woman, the box coming out of intersections. I see we have a representative from the police department, and they talked about, um, putting speed signs on the top of the hill, which is a great idea. However, using their own words reduces it by four to five miles an hour. And they said the average speed is forty four miles an hour and could be higher. So that mitigation factor is not necessarily a factor. And this gentleman could, uh, car up there and take the people all night long because it's a sort of speed, the, uh, speed limit. Um, overall, it's been talked about mitigation. I think the applicant is, um, to be kind, very light on mitigation. My last comment, the report you were, I think it's very well written. My last comment, the report you brought, I think it's very well written. I would urge the public to read it. We've torn it apart a little bit, but I would like to point out on the initial site plan comments, I'm concerned about number 15, number 17, number nine, number eight, 18 through 26, and 28. I think the points you brought up, I would not permit it to be universal. I don't want to be absolute, but I want to connect it on what we have done. Definitely.
Does he have a comment?
Yes, so one thing about the proposed emergency entrance, normally in other emergency access properties or pieces of property we looked at, it's gated, only accessed from police and fire. I think we, as we talk about this more, I'm concerned someone will turn in there inadvertently and get stuck, and then if they have to try to back out on Main Street, that will be problematic. So however they're going to configure the emergency access in the existing driveway, it needs to be addressed or reviewed very closely so we don't end up having people turning and then realizing they can't get through and then backing back and back out or turning around. I kind of reiterate, Phil, about the near on Pine Grove, near Run, I mean, we know that that's a cut through as well. So that, and other members of the public have brought up different cut throughs, even though they seem to have a lower traffic impact, maybe didn't keep the threshold. I think we should consider looking at those other cut throughs as well. And, you know, John, your report talked about road safety audit, which is heavily suggested. I mean, I don't think we can require it, and the applicant is considering it. I would just put a point into that, really consider doing the road safety audit so that we can review that, given that the traffic crashes are above the average. And I think I would like official commentary from the fire chief on the traffic issues and the emergency vehicles going in and out of, you know, where it's section one. Normally, we don't get a memo sometimes from other town staff. So I think that would be helpful for us. Thank you.
John, do you have a couple of questions?
Yeah, a couple of them, kind of questions, but both of you, the best person we have to do. The data that you do lies in the I D standards and then national standards. Everybody here knows the limit is above national standard, on everything. So in that regard, how does data get calculated? Because we're in the Northeast, we are more hyperdensified than anywhere else in the country, and how does that data get attributed to bringing it into normal? That's question one. What data do you want to do that? Or I got a couple of them that both you get the answer to.
I'm happy to answer. I think it was Major Ores said, I said that that data is not only something that we always use to be tested, it's monitored in every state for large products that have to go through the state permanent process, called E O. There's quite often monitored requirements where you have to check the severity of the traffic. Something that's large, that's in my own back four, pretty much goes to the state. So not only is the data all kind of used, the sound is just about as accurate. And I agree with the region, quite often those rates of service, which means I, the third of those, have to see in operation. And I know that it's difficult to balance as far as the number of problems, and yes, this is a large problem, but with 800 units, if those are 22, everybody's getting all the same time, reviewing the same few hours, that distribution of traffic of the day is something that is being tested and evaluated over decades, but regularly in fact. The most recent video, just two months, two weeks ago, where these cities are probably quite often make sure that they pass the testing, but odds of this actually generating. So I have zero concern about the overall heat power avenues of 800 pairs. It doesn't matter where they go, how they open, once they get on the road, is the safety sufficient. But as far as level trips at the state of generating, highly confident that it ends up the act of town, not presented at all, but you do so many different studies, public and private, so that I actually know this story.
Next question would be, both of you guys do this for a living constantly, and can anyone give me a project very similar to this, that a traffic study was done, and then looked at three years later, and maybe go back six years before it opened, and then give us data representative of what it actually is today compared to like, oh, you're going to be fine, it's only 1% growth. Do we have an actual project that you can do, or is that we will look at?
We prefer to see this one. One to do that, in a sense that are reliable. I can tell you that my parents used to go down over 55 markers that they were there for nearly a decade. I was there at all times of day, the characters, etc., and it was roughly 100 units. So a smaller comparison, but partially similar to what I see today. So that's just a technical experience, but it's easy to get out there at any point, but I think that's deeply relevant as a post-graduated program.
Concern about the crash data, only been three years, and a lot of the accidents, I was telling you earlier, mentioning the accident on Main Street. After the accident of 300 in Windsocket, because of the turn and the high grade and the slowdown, I would possibly like to see some data from the city of Windsocket of how many, from that road down to the end related to moving country, how many accidents have been there in the same timeframe? Because half saying only three accidents, I find that actually, I'm not going to deny that the police reports aren't there, I just don't see it because I've looked at it for 32 years. The next thing is in regards to 800 units, 1.2 cars. How does the applicant plan to handle, so you only get one pack, you can have two, there's only 1,200 package spots, so how would you regulate this?
1,000.
It said the plan, what's required, and they have 1,243 on the plan, which is based on the D E C form. So how is that going to be regulated and mandated so that we will never have 1,200 in the past?
The parking, there are other sources of information, you have to justify that information of...
But we don't buy it on state.
Yeah, so you buy it as one thing, but then this, your question really is that practical?
Well, that's what you have to live to build by. You have what we, the people, have voted for in this town meeting through five.
Correct.
So just to read them, be careful what you're going to say.
I understand, we will prefer with the developer, the applicant here, on looking at other sources to determine whether that parking ratio is aligned with realities of other types of situations.
The next step is the traffic. You said it's going to be green all the time unless someone pulls up to it. So Velasquez Boulevard, that's a state regulated light. Are you going to tie your light with the state light because that's going to cause havoc? And then maybe brought up the testing, which is absolutely a must in my mind, which, but that's just going to create more and more traffic. It's going to queue even further if it's not timed properly.
The design of that will be subject to another judiciary review, but I can say that we know that the philosophy signal currently works in 140 second cycle, really funny cycle. We believe that that signal cycle can be modified shortly so that it works more efficiently than it currently does. And you are correct that the signal that this driver location would consider what that cycle length is and try to coordinate the operational system. So that is part of the design process, which I, it's a good question, it's something that is important.
Can I just try to make, I'm sorry, you can shorten a cycle, you're having over 55 people having to cross the street where they push that button? Like, how are you going to shorten, how are you going to speed up a 65-year-old person who might be handicapped across the street by shortening the cycle of the light? So this is like, that is nice, it's good talking points, but it's nonsensical in the real world application.
All right, sir, thank you for your comment. You did bring up the fact that the kids down there in Rentham, and so we all wrestle with that.
One last point, one last point, I'm a golfer. I actually golfed when I was a golfer. So one of my main concerns is from 3:45 in the afternoon to 5:15, is peak Monday through Friday, we, that was, awesome, go up at 10-minute intervals, sometimes not, depends on kind of the year. You're looking at 48 golfers every hour, so you got 96 extra hours just going in during your peak time of when you're taking traffic studies. So the golf and the tee times, you guys know much better than that. The next one is the traffic study, because I'll tell you, I wait, come in front of the section one to turn in, because I'm waiting in line with probably other golfers to get in.
I appreciate that, that's one of the reasons we're going to look at T sheet.
Yeah. I'm a golfer as well. Yeah, and I play there, that's the only reason I know this, because every Monday.
I used to go in, because I had problems.
Tough. Yeah, that's it. Those are all my points.
I just have comments, and I'm coming from a different angle, I think, than the rest of the board. First, I'll say this, when I look at the traffic studies, we should all be aware that they provide a lot of good information about what's happening here and now, but when it comes to predicting what's going to happen with a development that hasn't occurred yet, it's a prediction. Sometimes it's right, sometimes it's wrong. And just as an example, real quick, you know, we had a traffic study done for an Amzon warehouse in North Bellingham, 243-page traffic study done, and at the end of that report, it said, no significant impact on traffic. So I'm not saying that they're not valuable, they are, but we just have, or at least I realize that they, you know, it's like a weather forecast, it may be right, it might be wrong. So in addition to this, I also like to employ a little bit of what I would call common sense because of traveling the streets of Bellingham, driving for over 40 years. I also listen to the folks here in town that travel these streets, they know what the traffic's like. Many of you have been here long enough to be here pre and post development, so you speak from a position of experience and not predict. So having said all that, as it relates to the traffic with this project, I mean, clearly it's already been set, 800 units, you know, there's going to be a ton of vehicles by Bellingham's standards, even, you know, given that it's on Main Street, which is just, it's an incredible amount to be put off of, on and off of Main Street. And I happen to agree with the fact that a light is actually needed to facilitate getting vehicles on and off the property and on and off of Main Street. The problem that I have is that I don't believe that a light has any business on Main Street. And the reason for that is that you've got cars speeding down Main Street, you've got good incline, you've got car on-site distances, and as a result, very inclement weather, you've got increased stopping distances. So while a light might facilitate getting vehicles on and off the property, I think a light actually makes the street less stable. So it becomes an unmitigated traffication. And just to give you a couple of quick examples, of first-hand experience, you know, back in the day, I had a 1968 Dodge Corolla. You know what my goal was? Driving down Main Street, getting enough speed to go airborne. If anybody actually did. So I want to tell you how fast I went in those dumb and dumb days of long time, replacing the older and lighter. But plenty of people have replaced me and also going down the hill at the accessory breaks with a cell phone in their hand while texting. The other thing I want to mention is that I used to be on the fire department when they had a call department, when they had call firefighters and A and Bs. Ironically, the last accident I went to was on Main Street. And it was a convertible, and when I got on the scene, it was on its roof, one occupant, the passenger was ejected, he was fine, the driver was still in the seat, deceased on the scene. So this was years ago. This street hasn't gotten safer over time just because of additional traffic, you know, the speeds that are going on and distracted by. So, you know, in my view, the answer is, it's not a light, it's not signage, it's not major infrastructure work. And my view, what needs to be done is looking at density. Because whatever project sits off of Main Street, in my view again, should be, should be a project where the number of vehicles are on site should be an amount or a number low enough that doesn't require a light and these changes. So for me, and again, I'm just one person on the board, but there's a ton of questions here. I think the answer is, you know, not trying to shoot one, something, you know, off of the street that just doesn't, in my view, make sense. Look at density, look at the number of vehicles that makes sense go that street, and listen, high density housing that's been around for a while, there's a reason why you don't see it off of Main Street. Because it just doesn't fit with the infrastructure. And even if you did major infrastructure changes on Main Street, those typically lag by years anyway. So again, you know, I'll just end it by saying this, in my view, we should be looking at density, not looking at, you know, signs and lights and major...
Thank you. All right, at this point, I'd like to see the board have some discussion points that we can make.
I know it's getting late, too quick items. So the first one, it's been a little, it's been reiterated quite a bit tonight, but just for clarification, your proposed traffic signal, that thing that you had with queuing block, that did not incorporate any type of traffic signal improvements on velocity? Correct that in the velocity intersection? The traffic report that we've submitted, including the addendum, does not propose any specific traffic mitigation at Velasquez Boulevard. However, based on the period of the commentary that we've earned, we are evaluating whether or not certain improvements might be appropriate and what the effect of those might be. A signal, a proposed signal, would be designed in a manner that allowed it to be coordinated with the operation of Velasquez. As a design, you can also, in the forthcoming...
Yeah.
That's not quite what I'm getting at, but appreciated. But so that fortified car staffing with a maximum of heat at your proposed intersection. So the reason why I was asking is because, so like many residents that are here, I have the privilege of traversing Main Street daily because I have a lot of people, or my neighbors have been knowing it, but I'd like Phil to mention...
have been knowing it, um, but I'd like Phil mentioned, I've driven down Main Street here to know about this, very familiar. And this morning, at quarter of eight, I knowed it while I was driving to work, that I was at eighty to eighty-two Main Street Station with three cars behind me. We were queuing for the Sigil at Pulaski Boulevard in one twenty-sixth. That is beyond your proposed entrance, which means that there's some, there's some disconnect with this queuing calculation. And additionally, while I was on my way here to this meeting, once again, traversing Main Street, quarter six, and there was, I was stopped where your proposed intersection or where your proposed intersection's going, and there was a significant line of cars behind me going past the press, almost to the base of the hill. The reason why I mention this specifically is because where we have the queuing, I really, really, really significant concern with this is the queuing is not calculated correctly for this Sigil, which I don't think it is. You're going to have queuing going on there. And I understand that currently, the way this is designed, we believe the site distances are, are adequate from that curb. I feel very, very, very concerned about that curb and how this queuing is going to react, or how the driver's reaction would be from around the curb if there are vehicles to stop on that curb. I believe, just based on the current, uh, signalized intersection velocity, it's, it's still to be greatly affected by adding a Sigil on Main Street. Like, please ask that this gets up to that.
We're glad to do that. There may have been some factors related to this, um, over the day, we were on the last piece of that, 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 that. Would have been, I'm not sure this is the case, um, preemption call, the Sigil, uh, that requires that, you know, uh, certain approaches will ring and Main Street goes red, uh, that might occur from time to time. Um, we have video of, of the intersection as well, so that, and I appreciate the comment.
It's a common occurrence, but it's not something that just happens after queuing, as I mentioned. Have to drive down the street frequently. It's obvious that it's a concern. The one other item that I wanted to add as well, this is very, it's not my new, but, um, for the interior roadways that you have on your site, I mentioned it, I think, previously in a memo regarding the roadway grades for the access road heading up to the current route behind your public hall floors. I'm not entirely certain what your proposed grades are there, but they're fairly significant is what it looks like on the plan. And per the, the overall levels, you do need the standards that specify subdivision regulations, and there's a maximum grade of eight percent that's allowed, or the actual request or waiting for it. So please look into that. Um, that's all for now.
Okay, it sounds like this is part of one of safety, traffic concerns. Um, I heard that you need to do some more road counts. Um, I don't think we, completely, that our, what those different accounts would be of the recommendations that I'm hearing from our consultants basically saying we need to do some more counts. So what's the best way, Rob, to work towards that direction?
So, well, recommend the applicant continue. I, it sounds like the, Bob, you mentioned kind of a two-week turnaround. I don't really wanna rush these things. That's two weeks from, you know, after we received all comments, we've, we've tentatively written down all the comments we've heard. We wanna be comprehensive and sensitive to those, so, you know, I agree.
I would rather.
Yeah, I would rather give time to the applicant for you folks to address comments. Additionally, you know, traffic is just part of this application. We've mentioned a lot of other items. Um, as far as utilities, we have two peer review consultants going with Val, uh, Water, two peer reviews, those are ongoing. I've heard from the Water peer reviewer that they think they'll have that coming by the end of September, they've not heard of the sewer yet. Um, and we still, we haven't started the stormwater assembly, and we're in peer review of the actual site plans, which that's gonna be seen in a lot of time. So, you know, we wanna keep these meetings productive, we wanna make sure that we have, you know, specific topics and dialogue that's meaningful. Um, the other issue that we have is, we try to schedule, because there is a significant route for the specific applications, we try and keep it a one item agenda meeting. We have two meetings in September, both of which currently have an application. One of them is September eleventh, the other one is September twenty-fifth. Now.
So I guess the question that comes up is, are we in a position to come back and be more traffic? And I heard Water was end of September, which puts it in a lot of hold. Um, it sounds like we need to do some more counts, and we can all get prepared for that term of the new counts. Is that a discussion, Rob, that you need to, the whole sides, or what would you like to do with that?
When you say we need to do more counts, they. I'm not counting.
You're not counting. The recommendation we have on the park, representing town, is suggesting that it needs to be additional counts.
Yes, and I believe, and I'll, you know, you are hoping to, to continue, I think you're hoping to continue sometime in September. If that's the case, I would rather not have this on the eleventh or twenty-fifth, we have meetings, uh, applications and meetings, which would leave the planning board having the honor of potentially meeting three times in one month on the eighteenth for a special meeting.
Okay, Rob, I'll remind the, the rest of the board, I remind the rest of the board that this is scheduled this evening, and we didn't have one scheduled tonight, we accommodated the applicant for tonight. Um, and it was, it was not a normal schedule meeting that was on our calendar. You know, because it's, it sounds like we're, we're talking about hope and anything else right now, we're, we're practicing September that.
So if we stick to the Thursday meetings, October second is E B A, so that's enough of, unless you wanna meet without meeting.
No, you're right.
Fair enough. October ninth is our regularly scheduled planning board meeting. We do have the Hartford Avenue project scheduled for that night.
So what's the schedule?
We don't have anything scheduled for later meeting October, what we could do, so October twenty-third is the second scheduled meeting, and then, or you could do a special meeting again in October, which potentially, you know, we should catch, we should catch this far, we still need to make sure that we have some time to make this stuff.
Yeah, so let me ask the applicant, so the recommendation we're getting is definitely additional counts. Although, I think we talked about, although I started that process already, I think we definitely need some additional counts. We got to do the police. I'm somebody that might make an example. Thinking that's gonna take a little time, a little, I'm crossing across. This is. No, I could recommend that. Let me, let me, I'd like to make a, yeah, just being in place.
I think you were here. I have any questions?
Okay, I, I. What is our, uh, there is no safety deadline, it's a special requirement.
Mr. Chairman, again, thank you everybody for your time, so. Um, sure, and I appreciate it, it was time to be here. To the extent possible, I'd maybe respectfully request the same would be added to one of the September meetings, you know, I think that in two months, um, kind of hiatus from our last meeting to tonight, I think, you know, there's obviously a lot to discuss, I think some continuity and that discussion is, which is helpful and important, um, as soon to be extended, we can maybe be added twenty-fifth. Um, but again, I, I defer, and I have a few questions.
What, what would be the topic then?
Well, I think the traffic's gonna be very well along with its consequences.
You may be, you may be suggesting, I suggest doing progress on this, but I'm hearing ready to turn over, you're hearing, you're.
There's a lot of other stuff to discuss, but I, you know, I would ask for maybe to continue until the twenty-fifth, if we need to, you know, if, if.
We do that, I don't know the precise step before. Well, the step before, you can, we have open applications, we can, whenever we want, pushing it out, I think, is going to be a lot more than a question. The other issue too with the September twenty-fifth situation is, we have an item already that was continued to that date, which is going to be in the R T M meeting. Now, I don't wanna speak program here, but I will believe that this venue is not exactly the greatest pick, but it's what we had available. Um, I would love to move that into the R T M meeting at some point, I think, you know, we might be able to accommodate the crowd. The issue becomes, it would have to be at R T M meeting the twenty-fifth, and I know the project, the application that's in front of us that night, which, right now, there's just one, I think very low of two, but I have time to meet it up, um, is going to garner pretty significant crowd. I don't think that we'd be able to make this work on the twenty-fifth. So I think if you can, if we can push this to October, the really options are, special meeting in September, we need some discretion, or push this to October. That, I think that's the best.
I got October twenty-third, it was a little too far, so if we could fight a time in the first half, I'd be very grateful. And, you know, I mean, we'd be happy to be, you know, second agenda, you know, we don't feel the need to be in this all right.
Yeah, the problem comes up is that we need one of the, we need to, as a capacity, we need to break down the signs. If you had that, why would you try to, why would you?
That's the bottom line.
That's correct, eighty-three.
That's not a hundred people here, but that's the reality, is that, I'm not interested in this project, it's the first time we've gone outside of the R T M meeting, whether it's been a high school or here, to accommodate a project, but there's this question. So it tells you what, what issue is, is that there is a lot of, okay, so I would make the recommendation that we go to the twenty-third for capacity, because everyone has, that night, they're ready to show up, and two projects, and now we're in a lot of people's room, because the budget isn't going to last. That's, that's on us, that's the case, so.
We do, we have the Hartford Avenue.
Oh, right, sorry.
So, you know, if we were ready faster, we have the water ready, the sewer ready, and I don't know, it sounds like the water's not, so, the end is a town, which is on the corner anyway, and then so can use the other ones, you know, but, so. And tonight, we have, I can leave you guys already, tonight, so, I know the hours already, um, I guess what I'd like to see is, is the twenty-third, if you're okay.
Thanks.
All right, so do you think?
No, that's, that's good, so we'll need them to move, we'll have to figure out the rooms as well, which, um, so I feel pretty confident that we can, we can handle R T M meeting room for less, or, like, to have it here, I cannot, I have this a lot of worry.
All right, so we're gonna continue, just a little bit. All right, so I heard the vote going on for, to have it on October twenty-third, was there a rotation? I think it was, it was, that town. Okay, you're okay. All right, so. One top, one top.
One top, eight, at nine, seven, seven.
Yeah.
We have a second.
Second.
Second, nine, one.
All right, before, before we take the vote, um, to be fully transparent, okay, there's two agenda items tonight, okay? This was the larger discussion that happened tonight, but anybody who looked at the meetings that happened tonight, was looking for a public meeting for preliminary subdivision, with preliminarys key there, subdivision will go in eight, eight, and so that is a procedural thing, which you're all welcome to stay, but it's a procedural thing that they're using to, um, protect their rights, much like they did in November. A little representation?
December.
And I'm seeing the shaking of their head over here, so, um, I'll just put that out to be literally transparent, that the board's gonna take the vote, we'll just discuss, and then we're gonna move on to open up a hearing, that is a procedural hearing to the same hour. You're all welcome to stay, if you're not, I don't want to answer your question, but you're fully transparent, that's what's happening, and, okay, I apologize for the time. So we have, we have the session, and I'd like to take your vote, Steve, it's a Q and A.
Business.
No, so.
So the meetings continue to October twenty-third, R T M meeting room, where you posted on the town website and the agenda. Any items that come up between now and then will also be posted on the website. Please, anyone who has any questions, do not hesitate to reach out, okay?
Thanks for coming, Steve.